All right, well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, colleagues, workforce, community members, and other key stakeholders. My name is Joe Ailer. I'm the current Chief of Staff for our UCore President and CEO, Ken Ruder. In the next contract, I will be replacing Rob Starkey, who many of you all know, who is the current Operational Excellence Manager and Deputy Chief Operating Officer. I'd like to welcome you to the first of a couple of town halls that we'll be doing. We have rearranged those just a little bit based on the registrations that we've been seeing, so we've obviously having the one tonight, and then we'll have one a week from today. But this is on behalf of United Cleanup Oak Ridge and the new Oak Ridge Reservation Cleanup Contract. So just want to take a minute before I begin on a few housekeeping items and talk a little bit about United Cleanup Oak Ridge. Some of you may have heard a little bit about the meaning behind the name, but for those that haven't, just want to share a little bit about that. As most of you probably know, working in this industry, corporations come together and they form teams to bid on these massive DOE contracts. As part of doing that, you all may remember back in the 2010-2011 timeframe when URS and CH2 came together and hence formed the name UCore. The U was URS, the C was CH2M Hill, the OR was for Oak Ridge. Well, when we started putting our team together, we took a hard look at that, and the UCore brand was something we were very proud of, something that we thought our community recognized, our client recognized, a lot of our key stakeholders, both locally, across the state, and at the federal level, really recognized. And so that was something that we wanted to hold on to as we moved into this new contract. The other piece of that is partnering, collaboration, integration were very integral to the success that we've had under the ETTP contract, but it was also a key theme as part of this procurement. And so when you added all that up, we wanted to keep UCore and the united piece stood out, United Cleanup Oak Ridge. And so I'm certainly very proud of that. I know all those on this stage are very proud of that. I hope you, as part of the workforce, who will be joining us in the new contract, are proud of that. And I also want to share with the community members here tonight that it's almost, well, it is a commitment from us to you all that we will maintain that unity with you in the next generation of cleanup. So let me just mention again how appreciative I am that you all took the time out of your evening. We know in this day and age, everybody's got an extremely busy schedule, and for you to carve out the couple of hours, it certainly means a lot to me and those of us on this stage. We're certainly excited to be here with you. In a few minutes, you'll hear from everyone up on the stage, and we're going to walk you through a number of things related to how transition's going, the new organization, the enterprise, some of the key personnel, some of the nuances of the new contract, as well as our vision looking forward. But that being said, you know, for many of us on this stage, it's been the culmination of almost five years of a procurement cycle. In fact, I see many of you in the audience, it's been five years of devotion to this procurement as well. And, you know, what I like to say is that it takes a village to do these things, and no matter how good our team is, how good the people are that lead the proposal, what I'd also like to point out, it's each and every one of you in this room that made a difference. It's the workforce delivering each and every day to make sure we're going home safely, we're delivering on our commitments to the client. It's the partnering and the collaboration aspects that I've already mentioned, and so I just want to thank each and every one of you for that. And then finally, to our client, I think we have a few members of our client here today, but just want to point out, we want to thank you for giving us the opportunity to partner and collaborate with you for the next 10 to 15 years. It certainly means a lot to us. You and the partnership that we've had with you over these 10 or 11 years are exactly why we've been so successful and why we're going to be so successful in the future. So just getting those things mentioned. As far as housekeeping items, just a couple of things, and then I'm going to turn it over to Clint Wolfley here, who is our Safety Systems and Service Manager. We mentioned in our announcements about face masks, you're certainly not required to wear them, but for those that aren't comfortable, I think most people are not, but if you are comfortable wearing one, feel free to do so. We wanted to do it in a larger auditorium, so you'd have room to space out if you weren't comfortable. Regarding the exits, you obviously came in through that door, but there's another one here to my right, and then the assembly area, and then likely event of an emergency is out in the grassy field just by the parking spots there. Couple other things I want to mention, if you'd like to pick up a few of our business cards, each one of us have left business cards on that black table. I was told that I had the biggest stack for some reason, and I'm sure I'm going to get heckled on that a little bit, but feel free to pick those up and bug Tom Dieter as much as you would like to there. A reminder, if you don't mind, just silence your cellphones, we're going to get through this in about an hour, and there'll also be plenty of time for some Q and A, so just hold your questions till the end. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Clint Wolfley. Clint?
Thanks, Joe. Hey, good afternoon, everybody. Once again, thanks for coming out. I'm Clint Wolfley, currently the Safety, Health, and Security Manager at UCore. Will also have that opportunity to be in that same role under the new contract. Just want to take a moment, as tradition applies to us, before we start any meeting, before we turn the key to any piece of equipment, before we grab a tool, we always take a moment to talk about safety and have a discussion on what hazards may be presented to us, what those controls are. And that tradition has really led us to some remarkable accomplishments over the last few years. This community, this workforce, has a long history of delivery and delivering on positive outcomes, and I'm convinced that that has been associated because of the strong safety culture that's been established here in Oak Ridge amongst 2,000 strong members of our workforce, a very supportive community, and also a supportive client. So I just want to take a moment and share with you what our emphasis is going to be over the next 10 years of this contract, and our ability that we're going to be able to provide continued success under this closure contract, and the next wave of environmental cleanup at my 12 O'Marne L and the completion of a heritage center. So what has got us to this point, what's going to get us there over the next 10 years? It's being aligned to our core principles, our values, the integrated safety management system, which we all have committed to, everybody up here on this stage, and all of the members of the workforce that are here today, and those that are not here but are still out doing work and preparing for tomorrow. And then also, including our voluntary protection program, the tenants that make up a collaborative and a partnering approach between management, labor, and the entire workforce and community. So we have a great opportunity in front of us, we have a strong safety culture, I encourage that we don't lose sight of that, we keep safety at the forefront of our mind as we journey through transition and out of transition and into the next wave of the next 10 years of work here in Oak Ridge. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Ken Ruder, our President and Chief Executive Officer.
Thank you, Clint. I want to echo a point that Joe made, which was a really heartfelt thanks to every one of our partners here in the room. Each of you play a special role, and I'll talk a little bit about the importance of partnership here in a minute. But at the end of the day, we achieved and acquired this contract by virtue of the performance of our integrated partnership. If you're ever given the opportunity to take a look at, you know, ultimately how the Department of Energy evaluated it, it really all came down, and they were really clear in their expectations and their requirements, that it really came down to people. And it wasn't just putting the, quote-unquote, "the best people" here, but putting forward the best entire workforce and then demonstrating through past performance and through, in meeting commitments, something I say a lot, building what you sold and finishing what you start, which is really at the core of the integrity and the value system of your organization, that that's what they wanted, and you needed to demonstrate that to them, you needed to offer that to them, you had to prove that to them. And it wasn't going to be one, four, five, seven folks that were going to do that. It was going to be the ability to demonstrate to them that you could do it with 2,000 folks, because that's what it takes to do jobs of this size, and none of that would not have been possible without all of you. So it really, you know, I say it a lot, at the end of the day, you know, no one who has to sit up and do this stuff we're doing up here, so I refer to us as actors, if you will, none of us can be effective or successful without someone who writes an absolutely amazing screenplay, and that's all of you. That's all of you, all of you that committed and worked side by side as community members, as stakeholders, as the client. Something very special has happened here. I've had the opportunity to work all over the country doing environmental cleanup. I know, I recognize every single person in the room. I know you all, you've heard my story before, my little tour of the rivers. I have never experienced this in my life, never seen the ability for essentially an entire section of the state to come together and deliver these outcomes. And so I think it's very important that we reflect and always never lose sight of the fact that who really won this job and then won the opportunity to go do it for another 10 years, and what I believe will be 15, because that's the maximum duration of this contract, was really you. And we all set off on that journey together, and so we, and the companies that own UCore that I'll talk here about in a minute, which will be very familiar to you, owe you a great thanks, because none of the elements by themselves could have come together and make this possible. You know, we were just talking, you know, kind of reflect on dates. It was one year ago today that we stood in front of the client in what they call an oral problem solving session, and then a series of interviews that you have to do with them, in which you have to demonstrate to them interactively what you told them in your offer, and essentially convince them that what was written on paper could be demonstrated to them in real time. And a number of us got the opportunity to do that. I'd say when you're doing it, when you're done with it, it's an honor, and the process of getting there, it's a burden, to be frank about it, it's a lot of long days, but, and so that's the significance of this date. The significance of a week from now, March 29th, March 29th at 10:00 AM in 2011, I received a phone call from our client, happy to inform you that you're going to be awarded the ETTP Cleanup Contract, and look forward to seeing you here in Oak Ridge, Tennessee on April 2nd. I said, "Well, that's sort of interesting, I'm sitting here at Richland, Washington," but rather than that, I pride myself on getting a day on the test when I know the answer ahead of time, so I knew it was going to be on April 2nd. And that started an 11-year journey to then get us to this point. And, you know, although it would be highly unlikely 15 years from now, I will be congratulating you again, I can assure you that one of these next-gen leaders that are here on the stage or in the audience will more than be the ones doing that, and sharing with you that appreciation, and better yet, how you've now carried out the next largest cleanup in the history of this country, because you currently own that with what you did at ETTP, and you certainly will, what we do in Bear Creek and Bethel Valley together, which then ultimately will set us up for the future, and we'll talk a little bit about that today, because I think that message came across loud and clear in our offer, and we backed it up with the people who could do it, and we backed it up with the integrity and the knowledge and the understanding when we did the oral problem solving session. So that all, all of that comes together. So I'm going to, can we go back to the agenda for a minute? So I'm going to talk through a bit about our team. You're going to see a lot of familiarity in it, but you're going to also see a little bit of difference. The difference is really in response to the contract, the scope of work, and what we believe to be the challenges that we would face, and how we turn those into opportunities. Tom's going to talk about transition and where we're at with regard to that, because that's the only, well, I guess we have two task orders issued to us now, but initially that was the only task order we received, which is Task Order 1. Pat is going to discuss our task ordering process, because I'm sure there's a lot of questions amongst all our partners on, well, tell us a little bit more about end-state contract management, tell us what this concept of IDIQ is, indifferent delivery, indifferent quantity, and how does that play into task ordering? And then, you know, really, what's been at the center is, we all have a common playbook, we all play from it, it wins us the Super Bowl, it wins us March Madness, whatever analogy you like. So we've got another strategy that we've committed to, and Ashley's going to talk about that and kind of lay the framework for it. Born out of that is the next series of visions that you're very familiar with, and it's going to pave the path to getting to where we need to be at the end of the contract, and meeting all those commitments we made in the proposal, so that in good conscience, we're going to do one others like one done to ourselves, which is, we expect people to build what they sold, and we expect people to finish what they start. And Sam, and the rest of the team will talk about that. Then, you know, always on mind during contract transition, I can assure you it's on mine too, which is, you know, when is Charlie going to hire me, and the rest of you, and how all that's going to happen? We have done a lot in that area. This is my fifth transition. Yes, you can question my sanity if you want to, but I questioned it at times, because I agreed to do a fifth one. But a lot of lessons learned about how do you streamline this process so it has the least amount of impact, if, in any case, maybe no impact, on the individuals with regard to moving from UCore to UCore. And so I give Charlie a lot of credit, I'll go through the details, they figured it out, and then we'll have a Q and A as long as you'd like to have that here, and we'll work to answer your questions. So a little bit about the company. So what's familiar? Well, certainly the name. UCore, I don't know if a lot of you know this, but UCore is a proper name. We actually established it over a year ago, if you want to look at it as copyrighted or owned by us. It's all related to what Joe said about branding and the significance of branding. For those of you that have been here for a long time, you'd remember when we had a discussion about branding and the importance of it, and its association with strategic planning, and how you build, grow, enable, sustain your brand through your strategic planning. And a number of you are familiar with our process of how we deliver work, and at the end, it's all about sustaining and perpetually growing your brand. So UCore was extremely important, and so we established it as a proper name, we've associated a new acronym to it, or a new phrase to it, that Joe went through and all the reasons why we did that, which was to clearly and concisely as possible, continue to demonstrate our value and our commitment to partnership. So any of you that were at the Vision 2020 event, or any of you who watched the video, would have seen me giving you our commitment with regard to our partnership and application of shared governance that continues, that there to symbolize that. We have now three owners of the company. These limited liability companies and joint ventures are set up and are owned, you can look at it as a private equity relationship, and each of these owners have a certain percentage of equity. The principal or the majority owner has the most shares, that's Amentum, and then they thus have the majority on the Board of Managers, exactly what you're familiar with today, and hold the Chairman position. The Chairman of the Board for UCore is still Jim Blankenhorn, for any of you who are familiar or know him, he's been the Board Chair for three years now. Principal Partner, so that's someone who has a substantial ownership of the company, that's Jacobs, that's continuing from before. And then a new member, and I'll go through it here in a minute on why they joined the team or why they bought into the company, is Honeywell Corporation. They're considered a minority member, so they own approximately 10% of the company. So Amentum owns 50%, Jacobs 40%, Honeywell 10%. We, there was a lot of encouragement in the RFP, or Request for Proposal, on teaming subcontract partners. We've been sold on that for over a decade, we've had solid, stable partners that have been integral to delivering the work, and so we continued with that because of the critical experience and stable and trusted relationship we have, so that's RSI Intech and Strategy. We, and I'll get to here why in a minute, but we, as we looked forward to the type of contract it is, some of the new requirements that are in it, and then some of the technology needs and technical challenges in the job, we had two other subcontract teaming partners, and that would be Longenecker and Associates, they go by LA, and then EAI, who is a technology provider. So that now makes up the team. We have three owners of the company, and then we have four teaming subcontract partners that all have member representatives that interact and share with regard to how we run the company at a governance level. So we really worked on this concept of the right team with the right people at the right time, and really carried that message through, and so you can see that here with regard to the team piece. Amentum and Jacobs stay in their commitment to deliver environmental cleanup here in Oak Ridge, with all the demonstrated strengths that were part of the original ETTP contract now carried over to the Oak Ridge Reservation Cleanup Contract. But then the addition of Honeywell, pretty much for two principal reasons. One is, one of the largest mercury environmental superfund cleanups in the history of the country, Agadagin Lake in New York, was actually carried out and successfully completed by Honeywell. They bring a significant amount of remedial action or remediational experience with mercury. And certainly, with everything that needs to be done in Bear Creek Valley, we knew that that was going to be a principal need. The other is, is that they do run the Supply Chain Management Center out of Kansas City. UCore's won a number of awards through our supply chain organization in utilizing, SCMC as it's referred to, for commodity purchases, and we made the decision that we were going to move into procuring more services from that also, and so that was a natural fit, because we get a natural synergy with regard to that. And I think many of you know, and we don't know how long it's going to go, but there are a lot of supply chain, global and domestic supply chain challenges. This gives us an edge up in our ability to use SCMC, and it's like Catlock purchasing, so they're kind of the Amazon for us. And it's all been competitively established, so we can go in there and buy, and buy, and buy, and we get exclusivity into that. So that was a real good add for us. Relative to our teaming subcontract partners and that aspect of it, so I'll start with EAI from the bottom, they bring proprietary mercury abatement technology, fixatives, amalgamators, things of that nature, that we can interact with and use, both soils, building debris, and when we're doing deactivation and demolition of former mercury used buildings. So it brought a protectiveness, a hazard abatement capability, and actually the ability to more effectively dispose of the waste. Longenecker and Associates, this contract has a significant number of changes as it relates to contract performance and mission assurance requirements. It actually requires us to implement what's called Enterprise Risk Management, and will ultimately implement a different auditing process or a set of internal controls. Longenecker has been leading the complex with regard to two mission assurance and disciplined operations. We have used them in a few other places selectively before, so we brought them on the team for that. Strategy is on the team now, focused in the areas they've been supporting us in a staff augmentation capacity, with a strong focus towards safety and health and waste management. You know, one of the leader, principal leaders in their company is actually leading the Environmental Management Disposal Facility project for us. So all our teaming subcontractors are all in, all our member companies are all in. We will utilize a significant amount of parent organizational reachback or parent organizational support. I don't see that being any less than, we usually average 100,000 to 120,000 hours a year, been doing that for 11 years now, I see that being the case. So the partnership between the parents, reachback, our teaming subcontractors, and our community and our set of subcontract partners that we have been using, there's over 40 of them plus of them, I don't see any changes with regard to that. That's the formula for success for us, it brings the best of the best to the solution every day. So this is the structure of the company, if you, from an office of the President standpoint. Some name changes in there, not overly significant. Some folks have aspired to outcomes that some of us dream about, so Steve Dahlgren and Rob Starkey are on the road to return it, they'll finish up with this contract. I wouldn't say I'm envious of that, because the Lord tells us that's a sin, so I'm not going to say I'm envious of their status, if you will, or their mode switch, for those of you that you like caught up. So Tom Dieter has joined the company as the Chief Operating Officer, and will have responsibility for all the execution and inwardly facing with the company. Kind of bracketing that, we have the technical side of our business, or Gablequist is joining and taking on the role of Technical Engineering and Nuclear Safety. Ken Ford and Mary is staying with the company to focus on being the regulatory officer, and we have five critical focus areas in regulatory that we need to get remedy to and get implemented by calendar 23. Pat Tins is joined as the Project and Business Services Manager, responsible for everything project and everything business, with the intent to integrate all that together. For, I think all of you know Brian Kendrick, he's staying on as Chief Financial Officer and will be working with Pat. Sandra Fairchild has joined us from Savannah Riverside. She was previously in the role that Pat fills here at UCore, and will be leading contract closeout. Contract closeout, that is of the ETTP contract, very involved, a lot of complexity, a lot of moving parts. Typically, what you find is it gets away from companies, and it turns into a long, protracted activity. We're focused and committed, working in partnership with our client to be done, close the ETTP contract in the next year. Just so you have a frame of reference, the contract that we took over in 2011 was the BJC ETTP contract, that contract's still open, by the way, so 11 years later. So it really is in the best interest of the American taxpayer to get contracts closed out. We have formed a new organization to be more focused on enabling the front end of work, so positioning the work to get executed as soon and as efficiently as possible for Tom, and to bookend the back end of the work, to build on our end-state delivery model, and the fact that this is now an end-state contract, and how all of that plays out on the back end, especially since our principal focus is, is economic development and environmental liability reduction and historic preservation. So very different than a number of kind of traditional superfund cleanup contracts. That's continuing in a much more significant way. If you were to go in and look at the contract, every single performance work statement, you're going to see the statement of land reuse in it. So the back end, the back end of executing the work, the work's not really done until we put the land back in play again for the benefit of the citizens. So we've stood up this program and sustainability office. Ashley Saunders will be leading that for us as our chief program officer. Assuming the role of chief of staff, since Joe, as he mentioned, is moving on to be deputy chief operating officer in operational excellence, is Samantha Dolanchar. And I know a number of you worked with her, she led the project management side of cleanup and D and D for us. And then some very familiar names that were, really, is really no change overall. So Clint Murray introduced himself as our chief safety officer. Roger Gerald will stay on as general counsel, and Charlie Mularkey will stay on in industry of services, since he came up with all these innovative ideas to hire us all simply and easily. Talked about Joe. Dan Macias is staying on as overall enterprise manager across all the enterprises for cleanup, and responsible for integrating that. He has three enterprise managers that will be working for them in. And then we have us. Scott Anderson? You okay? Scott Anderson? Thank you. Pat's eyes are better than me, he's much younger than I am, too. So Scott Anderson is moving over to take on the role of, and we should all be, we should all be happy I didn't do that during the role of problem solving session. That would have been a stung.
Charlie, have I been fired? Or have I been hired?
He has a letter for you, Scott, it's on there. It's my eyes, it's not my memory. So Scott has taken over all of waste and nuclear operations for us, that's, I mean, at the center of, center of everything is, those who deal with the waste the best, clean up the quickest. We know that, it's the waste factory concept. And so Scott has, Scott has come home to where it, where it all started for him, and will be leading all aspects of solid and liquid and gaseous waste treatment and disposition. And then Sam Peck is going to be responsible for all environmental regulatory services. She's also the RSI Intech member representative, so she's the senior RSI person on the job. She has responsibility for everything regulatory and environmental from an execution standpoint. So everything that Tom and Scott and Dan and Joe all need to be able to go and carry out D and D buildings, and remedial action of soil, and remediation of groundwater, Sam's team implements that. So you see all, that's that bee, buzzing bee group that you see all around in the vehicles, taking samples, you know, going down by creeks, things of that, that nature. So that's the office of the president. Other than standing up a chief program office and sustainability office, not a significant amount of change with regard to this. We have brought the three enterprises together, like I said, under Dan. I do need to share with you too, that one of the principal focuses and things we see going on in the, across the whole federal government, is, is an overall objective to bring everything environmental together. And so, if it relates to climate, if it relates to environmental justice, which really is the whole basis for doing superfund cleanup, getting things off the NPL, and getting the national priorities, and getting them back in the hands of the community, resiliency, sustainability, and building mutual equity as a result of those outcomes, which fits us nicely, because that's shared governance, has really all come together. So if you talk to folks in the federal government, regardless of agencies anymore, they package all of this together as what I call the biggie, big environmental. So environmental management is more than just effectively taking a building down or remediating soils. It's really this whole cradle to grave outcome that the federal government is looking for us to deliver. We're doing an absolutely outstanding job of that, and so it was a natural fit to establish that in this chief, chief program office. So you'll see us doing more and more with regard to that. So our partnerships, they stay the same, because they have delivered history. This is the largest, ETP is the largest superfund cleanup ever done in the country, and possibly one could argue maybe in the world. And, and so, the only thing that changes there is really that catchphrase on United Cleanup Oak Ridge. Ucor's there, the client is there, the integration of the client across its three focus areas is national defense, national environmental management, national science program, our regulatory partners, our community partners, our safety partners, and most importantly, our labor partners, who stabilize all this, because we never ever lose sight of the fact that they go out and do the work every day. It's a pretty, pretty tough environment, so all our partners are there. And with really no significant change there, other than some additions to who makes up Ucor, really kind of looking towards the future and our ability to deliver Vision 2031. So I'm going to end with my commitment to all of you, and when you look, if you choose to look at the website, if you choose to continue to watch the videos, and our YouTube channel and all that, the message isn't going to change there, which is, we understand how we all sit here today, and that's through a commitment to partnership, and a loyalty to that, and a commitment to sustaining. Nothing's changing there. That applies to our stakeholders, our community partners, our state partners, our client. And I want to emphasize the significance of it. Remember, it only takes one break in the chain, and we lose it all. And so to me, it's just absolutely phenomenal that altogether, we've been able to stay unified. So back to that name, for over 11 years to generate these outcomes, and then position us to do that. So sustainability is a strength of ours, and, but it is difficult. Do you know a incumbent quote unquote, has not recaptured comparable or common work in over 20 years? You've accomplished something that hasn't been done in multiple decades. It's not, it's not in the DNA for these to be the outcomes. But you did what we all agreed we would do, we would leave them no choice, and we did that through our partnership. We're going to stay true to our delivery model, because it's self-growing, it's self-perpetuating, which is, one, we've got quadrant one, we've captured our work, now we got to go build what we saw and finish where we start, that's what we expect of each other, that's what we expect of ourselves. And then most of all, we've got to tell our story, we've got to tell it better than anybody else, because nobody tells their story better than you. And we'll continue to do that. Lastly, is shared governance. We have built amazing equity together, and how that happens is we all sit at the table. We all sit at the table together. Everybody has a seat there, those who want to be in the front of, I call it front of the train, you know, ensuring the train goes down the track safely, they're welcomed up there, we embrace that. You know, I have a personal commitment that we're going to continue with next generational leadership growth, to make sure that we don't have a leadership gap or a generational gap in our business. We invest a significant amount of time and money in that. You see some of those leaders up there, you see them here on stage, they're going to run the company in the future, they're going to position us to successfully complete all the cleanup. So all of those folks, all of you have a seat at the table to the level that you want to do that, and you want to provide input. There's nothing worse than having a playbook that the players have not been involved in. You usually only win, at best, 50% of the games, because you win on athleticism, you don't win on playing as a team. Worse yet, there's nothing more terrible than somebody who coaches from the box, in my opinion. You know, there's no value in sitting up in the box screaming down on a rainy windy day, catch the ball, run faster. I'm sure as insulted by that as I would be. And so, everybody has a seat at the table. Those who run operations, those who play the game every day, those who coach the game, those who own the team, all of us are there together. And that's our commitment, that's my personal commitment, if you go back and look at the Vision 2020 video, that was, that's my commitment to you, that as long as I'm here, as long as you give me the opportunity to be here, then we'll be focused on these commitments. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Tom to give you an update on transition. If you have any questions, again, I'll be here, you know, for the Q and A session, I'll stay to answer questions, but equally, and a number of you do it, I have an open door policy, and I know a number of you use that, keep using it, come by and see me, want to have a cup of coffee and talk, you've got concerns, you've got ideas, how to make our playbook better, please come by and see me and share.
Thanks, Ken. I go by his office just to get his cookies, so it's an open door. I don't go all the way in and just open the door, steal a cookie, and get back out again. Now, I'm here for transition, I've, I got the special honor of joining transition, and I just want to check one thing before I get going. How's, how many of Joe's cards are already gone compared to mine? Is it even stack, or a light way down?
This is Joe's card.
Yeah?
And...
Oh, way ahead. So, anything goes bad, call Joe, anything good, call me.
Paid off. I remember that.
No, transition out, you guys are probably all ladies know Steve Dogren, I'm sure he's been at many meetings across Oak Ridge and around the surrounding area. He's doing a great job for us, he's putting everything together so that the closeout can be done on this job, and transition for me and my team can be a lot easier. Joe and I are doing the transition part, Steve and Clint Murray, I saw him back here, they're doing the transition out part, and then Sandra Fairchild will be closing it out. And it is a big task to close it out in a year, I mean, very few places has that ever happened, so good luck to Sandra, I would rather be on the transition end. The period of performance is from February 28th to May 20th. What we're trying to shoot for is May 20th, so that I can convince my boss right next to me, I was going to call him Big Ken, but he said, no big jokes today, so, the big boss. But I'm going to transition through May 20th, and then I'm going to convince him that everything's done right, and then he's going to sign a paper saying, we're ready to take over the new contract. So it's, it's an arduous process, there's a lot of procedures, processes that you have to blue sheet, get it all ready, and make sure that all the i's are done and the t's are crossed, to make sure it can go across smoothly. So I was put in that position as, you know, running that task, and Joe's with me to help me finish it. We've learned a lot from other jobs, we had a lady here with us named Jenny Stoltz, who taught all of us up here a lot about transition. She, she's going to come back, make sure we're doing it right, but she's done five, and she had many lessons learned from Hanford, Idaho, Savannah River, and legacy management, so it's helping a lot. We're working right along with DOE, it's a big partnership really, because you have to make everything work together. We have meetings with them every morning, we have PODs, is what we call them, and then we have weekly plans, and then we go to monthly plans with old Ucor to make sure everything's going good. So I think it'll be a great transition, and as Ken says, make sure you're under budget and ahead of schedule, and you'll do all right. So that's what we're trying to do. But we're trying to do it effectively, efficiently, and as safely as we can. So that's all I have on transition, and I'll turn it over to Pat Tims.
Well, now I know what the animals at the zoo feel like. See, this is going to be, I don't know. See, we can do something different. So I'm going to use that same joke next Tuesday, so don't tell anybody. So I've been gone for 34 months, and I've been to two sites since I left here, and I will tell you that while every site, and every, every client, and every stakeholder in each of those sites has their strengths and weaknesses, coming back here is definitely the best site to be at, you know, it's for, across the board, workforce, all the stakeholders, the client, everyone pulling in the same direction, it means a world of difference, and that's why, that's why I think that we were able to recapture the work scope. And so coming back, it's been a great event, almost everybody say, we're glad you're back, with the exception, I think Courtney, Dan, and I think Laura Haug. But except for them, it's been a very warm walk. So I'll give you, so I'll give you a quick kind of overview of the new ORRCC contract, that was hard to say during orals, Oak Ridge Reservation Cleanup Contract. As Ken mentioned, it's a, it's an IDIQ, it has a 10-year order period, of which they can issue task orders up to 10 years. However, we can continue to work on task orders up to 15 years. So it's kind of, when you go back, and you think about the old ETP contract, and how they had set up cleans, and hey, if you do a good job, I'll exercise this option planning, if you do more work. Same thing here, as long as we continue to deliver as we have over the last 10, 11 years, we can be here for another 15 years. So that $8.5 billion is the estimated value, about $545 million per year, is what they had laid out in the funding profile. And we will be issued task orders as long as we continue to do good work. Tom, I mentioned task order one, that runs until 5/20. Task order two, originally the RFP was going to be four months long, it's a fixed fee task order. The department had looked at the lessons learned, and what had occurred at the other sites up at Hanford and Idaho, and realized that the amount of time and effort and resources it takes to get a, a task order in place for three or four years, up to five years, takes a long time. It's something that, you know, with certified cost of price data, you cannot turn around in 120 days, get the proposal to the department, let them do their evaluation audit, and then get it awarded in a timely fashion. So they were, they were smart to go back to headquarters and say, hey, we believe it makes most sense to have this implementation task order two last an entire year. And so that's what the department's gone back to headquarters and asked for, and that's what we are currently in the process of putting the plan together for that. So a lot of the project controls brother out there are hard at work with the cams, trying to figure out, what does, what do we need to do for the next year, and how are we going to track and perform that baseline? And so the department gave us a notice of receipt, I guess a week and a half ago, is that right, Phil? About a week and a half ago, we were working on that. So the folks are putting that together. The plan is that we will have that PCR, so baseline change request, delivered to the department 30 days prior to May 23rd, so that they can do their review while going to get that implemented, and we have an entire year to continue operations. That is not included, and this will come up later in the presentation, TWPC, which is part of the new contract that's still, so at some point in time, that contract will expire, and we will take over operations of that, of that work scope under Scott Anderson, so we'll talk a little bit about that. Currently, what we are proposing, and that task order two is not part of that, but we will have to bring that into task order two sometime in the October time period. Ken Gruder, you'll see his name on there, he is named in the proposal as the task order two manager. So he's going to be responsible for a delivery of task order two. And then in the June timeframe, so it's not very long, after, after everybody, the cams and all the project folks and project controls engineers get done implementing that baseline, we are going to kick off the proposal preparation for task order three and four. Task order three is the mission support task order, it's laid out in a cost plus award fee format, so similar to what we've been doing for the last 11 years. That's going to be run by Scott Anderson, since as Ken mentioned, he's got most of the nuclear operations work scope that falls under Scott. And then task order four is the end states task order. That will be run as a cost plus incentive fee task order. The department has laid out a 10-year task order plan, which myself and The department has laid out a 10-year task order plan, which myself and a few others are going to be with the department on a preview tomorrow, to talk about what those task orders will look like, what scope will be included, at what point in time, what the fee structure will be, if they're standalone, capital projects, et cetera. So, there'll be a lot of work going on once we come to June, our goal is to have the proposals submitted, or Task Order 3 and 4, by October. So October will give the department seven months to do the review, to get negotiations done, so that by the time we start Task Order 3 and 4, it'll be fully negotiated, baseline in place, and we'll be ready to take over that work scope at that point in time. So it's extremely, extremely aggressive, but definitely we can, we can make it happen with all your guys' help, so. If you flip to the next slide, you'll see kind of what I was mentioning from a time perspective. So Task Order 2 going to run for a year, so on, you know, potentially through the end of March, if we try to get a, start of, start of, excuse me, end of May, we try to get a business month start in June, so Task Orders 3 and 4 will start then. And it looks like they'll probably run five years timeframe, and there will be overlapping task orders, like I said, depending on if it's a capital project or not. They bring in such as the construction of EMDF, there's a couple of the facility demos that are over $50 million for the demo portion of that, so they will fall under 433B, and those will be standalone task orders. But with that, I'll pass it on to Asher.
Thanks, Pat. So nice to see all of you here, thanks everyone for coming and all the familiar faces, I see a lot of in-state and Heritage Center folks, so I really appreciate your support today, team. So I've been asked to talk about the strategic plan for the next 10 years of cleanup on the new UCore, United Cleanup Oak Ridge. As Ken mentioned, you know, this is a great way for us to not only lay out the plan and the vision for the future, but to really keep ourselves accountable to ourselves and to our stakeholders for what we've committed. And so, those of you who have been around UCore are familiar with the way that we use strategic plans, we develop them, and then we roll them out to our workforce and ask for their feedback. So, those of you who are members of the workforce, you can look forward to, on day one, we're going to be able to roll this out, use a shared governance approach to say, "We really want to hear what you have to say," to make sure that we're all aligned and that you have a voice in this process. So, it's also a great way to just kind of get the conversation started, to kick off, you know, here's what we laid out for the client, here's what we proposed, there's a path out in front of you for the next 10-plus years, hopefully. So, and as Ken mentioned, we've also got some of the emerging issues that I think we, in a large part, have already embraced as a team, but the environmental, social, and economic issues, so you'll see that really throughout the strategic plan. And so I'm going to cover what the five focus areas of the strategic plan are, as well as the Vision 2031, which is what we call our strategic plan, but it's also what we will deliver in execution space and cleanup across all three Oak Ridge Reservation sites. But I'm going to turn it over to the operations team to really walk you through what the elements of Vision 2031 are. What I'm going to highlight are the four strategic enabling focus areas, several of them actually, one of them is the Chief Program Sustainability Office, and several will be run out of our office. But as, as Ken mentioned, the Program and Sustainability Office is a new organization that is intended to help quote-unquote "book in the work," to lay out the plan, develop the strategy, and then ensure we have all the sequencing and alignment associated to what the vision and the missions of both Y12 and ORNL's programs are, as well as come in on the backend and maximize the opportunity for reuse. And that's at all three sites, whether it's reindustrialization or the mission needs of those other sites. So, we really see a lot of great alignment with our partners, and also an enabling function for the field and the workforce. Digital transformation, this is an initiative that will be run out of the Chief of Staff Organization, we've actually already kicked this off, but this is a really great way for us to embrace technology, embrace innovation. I think we've always prided ourselves on having operational excellence, we want to make sure that our business systems are at the same level of excellence, so over the next several years, you're going to see us investing in this phased approach to digitally transform our entire organization, and that also will be in support of field implementation of the work. So, digital transformation, that supports field execution. Ken mentioned environmental justice, diversity, equity, and inclusion, Sonya Johnson will be running that organization for us in the new contract. So, this is an area where I think we can really elevate our team, I mean, we've done a lot to invest in our workforce, but I certainly think there's more opportunity through environmental justice, workforce development programs, to reach out into the communities around us, to bring new talent onto our team, to invest in retention in the workforce, to grow the workforce that we have now. But this is also the lens that a lot of the decisions are being made through at a national level from environmental cleanup, environmental management, so it's really critical that we factor environmental justice, climate justice into the decisions that we make as a team. And finally, climate management and justice, you know, there's just so much opportunity here. I think we as environmental management and their contractors are seen as leading the charge in both being, you know, this is core to our mission, right? I mean, we're the environmental folks, but also that we really get things done as it relates to impacting the environment in a positive way. So there are so many initiatives coming out from green energy opportunities, and things that we just want to lean into as an organization and be seen as the leaders across the complex, so I think, look forward to more opportunities there. So all of these four enabling components, we really see as kind of the X-factor that sets our team apart, and you guys have been the difference makers, and we want to continue with that success in the future. And so, I'm going to turn it over to the operations team to talk about what delivering Vision 2031 looks like.
Good evening. So, as Ken already mentioned, our commitment to the workforce, our community, our stakeholders, and our client is really to build what we sold and finish what we started. So based on the momentum of, and building upon the momentum of Vision 2020, in which UCore delivered that four years ahead of schedule, $80 million under budget, and it resulted in $500 million in environmental liability reductions to the American taxpayers, we're going to move to the next phase of environmental cleanup here at the Oak Ridge Reservation. And what that aspirational vision is really focused on is delivering the final cleanup of the Heritage Center, the final cleanup of Bear Creek and Bethel Valley, and we're going to do that all by 2037. It's important to note that it's in full alignment with the Department of Energy's strategic vision for 2021 through 2031. And then after 2037, which will be the end of our 15-year contract, it'll really lead the way to shifting the focus to do the final cleanup at Melton Valley in ORNL. And if we can stay on track with our timeline, that'll allow us to deliver that cleanup five to seven years ahead of the federal baseline. So to build upon what Ken discussed earlier, it's really monumental in the fact that ETTP has delivered significant, super fine cleanup, well, the new Oak Ridge cleanup contract will do the same by around the 2040, 2042 timeframe. With that said, Dan Macias, Scott Anderson, and Sam Pack are going to take you through the details of Vision 2031.
Thank you, Samantha, and there's no way I can see that, so I have a cheat sheet right here. But before, before we dive into the details of Vision 2031, again, Dan Macias, I'm going to be the Site Integration Cleanup Manager. Ken reminded us of something in one of our staff meetings, and for a lot of us that were involved in Vision 2016 and Vision 2020, there's a tremendous amount of work that got done, a lot of detail, a lot happened, and now as we look at this new contract and Vision 2031, and the amount of work that's in that new contract for that scope is huge. And that's a big deal, particularly for a lot of folks in here who have many years ahead of you, there's a lot of work on this contract. So, all of the little daily stressors and things that we go to, we shouldn't lose perspective on what a huge win, what a huge opportunity is for many, many people sitting in this room for when great beers like myself are off and gone and doing something else in retirement, and getting to that point that hopefully one day that Steve and Stark you're in, right? So when you, when you get to that point, there's just a tremendous, essentially just almost every building at Y12 and ORNL that has to go through an EM cleanup is on this contract, so big, big deal. So I'm going to hit the highlights here again, I can't see this, I'm going to hit my cheat sheet. So, if you look at Heritage Center to start with, at the top, at the top, it talks about, in the first two years, we want to get the soil cleaned up at each, at Heritage Center, so get all the remedial action work done and behind us, and get that work cleaned up, and then Ashley, we talk about end states and transitioning that scope over to the community for reuse. And then that's in that next five-year window, we'll stay on the Heritage line, we'll talk about the next five-year window, getting those parcel transitions over, and then finalizing regulatory decisions, particularly as it relates to groundwater, and that's where Samantha Pack will join us here and talk a little bit about the, about the groundwater and the regulatory strategy.
Thanks, Dan. So those of you who know me know that I'm pretty darn passionate about cleaning up the environment here in Oak Ridge, the environmental media, the soil, the groundwater, the surface water, the sediment. And so, it is a particular honor for me to be a part of finishing ETTP Heritage Center and getting that land transferred to beneficial reuse after the cleanup is done. And that's where we are. Like Dan said, the cleanup at ETTP was kind of done, has been done in three steps, first step D and D, the buildings are down, Vision 2020. We are currently working to finish the soil work, we're over 80% done with the soil work, and that should be done within the next two years. And then we're, we're hitting the third step, which is the cleanup of the groundwater, the surface water, the big surface water ponds out at ETTP, these are, these are big projects, we've already started on them, we are doing three groundwater circular records of decision over the next five years. One of them, we are well into, we just sent the Department of Energy, who then transferred it to the regulators, a proposal to start the cleanup of the groundwater in the ETTP main plant area. We are proposing a bio remediation cleanup, which is basically microbes eating the contamination in the groundwater, which is a very proven technology. So we are getting started with all of this work, it is not going to be easy, the regulators are also very passionate about the groundwater and the surface water here in Oak Ridge, and they want to give us a lot of help as we move through this. So, it's going to be a challenge. But with that, I'll turn it back over to Dan.
All right, thanks. Let's, let's jump in real quick to ORNL, we'll stay on that line. For a lot of you out there working right now, you know we're in, we're in a few buildings, 3005 to 3010, doing a lot of deactivation work. As far as ORNL, those are going to be the first couple of buildings that are going to come up for demolition in the near term this year, so the first couple of years, we're going to be focusing on those buildings and other facilities such as OGR at ORNL, that's not a fond list, but this is, this is a high notional thing. So, a lot of work happening in that central campus area at ORNL to get those facilities, Isotope Road's another one that's in there, going through all the deactivation, and eventually getting to the point where we start demolishing those facilities. As we get into the 2024 to 2026 timeframe, you see some of the other buildings in there, the 3544, 3517, the 3026, Ecel Bank, EGCR, so we'll start focusing on that central campus area, and then spreading out as we get to some of the other facilities at ORNL, get through the deactivation, and then into the demolition as well. And then you see past that, in the next 10 years, you get to MSRE, and you've got MSRE is, we're going to go down a path of looking at potential institute decommissioning process, so there's a lot of work that has to happen to make that, that liability for the government go away as well, and then you see Building 3029. So a lot of focus, a lot of activities, one of the, one of the reasons Mike Tybalt, they gave me the Site Integration and Cleanup Manager position, is our challenge is going to be integrating all of this work, so that the deactivation crews, as an example, I see a lot of some of our crack brothers and sisters out here, so that the deactivation crews can go from one building, whether they're at ORNL, they go to the next building at Y12, our demolition crews can go from one building to the next. So integrate all this demolition and deactivation work, so that our crews can transition from one building to another uninterrupted, and we get this all accomplished by 2031. At the bottom there, also at ORNL, you see Transition, Integrate and Operate TWPC, and Complete the LGWO Upgrades, that's going to fall under Mr. Anderson, so I'll turn that over to Mr. Anderson.
I'll say what you just said.
Do it.
No, I think, hanging there with us guys, Dan just needs a breath, really, he could have kept.
I talk quick.
So, Pat had mentioned, and just as Dan said too, I think there's a lot of challenging things and interesting things going on. Me getting back into operations is, is going to be a good thing for me, and hopefully for all of you too. But I think one of the biggest challenges we're facing with this, everybody knows the work, right? But, but one of the new elements is, is the Transtronic Waste Processing Center right up the road, and I know many of you have interfaced with them, because we do store waste for them and we transfer waste to and from them. But we've never been in the inside, we've never really run TWPC, so that's something new and exciting, and that'll happen sooner rather than later, as Pat had mentioned, probably by the end of this fiscal year. We will tell the department, as long as they want us to go do that, we'll tell the department we're ready to take over operation of TWPC. And then I think the other exciting thing too, and I had the, I had the opportunity to go tour 3608 over at ORNL on Friday, and how amazing it is to see that place relative to when I left in 2015. There's a ways to go, but some of the improvements, all the improvements they've made, just phenomenal, and the DCS system going in, it's going to be a great place to run for decades to come. And again, I like Ken, I'm not going to live to see that, but, you know, some of the younger people will. So, I think within the early part of the next five-year window, we'll have most of those lifecycle upgrades complete, continuous purge system going, which will set the stage for a significant reduction in costs in MSRE, and start, and let us turn it over to Dan, so he can start planning the deactivating and demolishing.
Thank you.
So you want to back for the Y12 line?
I think I do. So, Y12, for those of you who have been out there, you see, you know, we knocked the biology complex down, and so the building, so now we're in the middle of the soil cleanup, the, there's some, there's some slabs that we're moving, clean slab removal in order to support the lithium production facility, so that is called Exposure Unit 5, so that work is ongoing right now, and the objective is to get all that work done, and then turn it back over to the site for their future production missions, which is that lithium production facility. And then completing some of the early site prep for the new landfill, we'll talk a little bit about, more about that here in a second, but there's a lot of work happening in the first couple of years, what doesn't show up there, but you know, we're in the middle of doing deactivation work, at Beta 1, Alpha 2, a lot of the prep work that we can get ready to start demolition of those facilities, and the follow-on, you can see demolished Beta 1 and Alpha 2 in the next five years, and then complete groundwater field demonstration at the new landfill. If you look then further out, there are all 1.4 million square feet of mercury contaminated buildings, so on scope, you've got Alpha 5, you've got Beta 4, and right now, we're in the middle of, we're doing all of the planning work for Alpha 4, which will, which will be another big building that we have to go do deactivation and demolition work. So, all of that 1.4 million square feet is envisioned in 2031, and then post 2031, as the uranium processing facility gets constructed, and the operations from the 9212 complex gets transitioned into UPF, that 9212 facility will have to get deactivated and demolished post 2031 in that, in that next period. So, a lot of work happening at Y12, a lot of great work going to keep everybody busy, all our crack brothers and sisters out there, you've got quite a bit of work ahead of you, and should be, should be some exciting times. I'll turn real quick back over to you, I think you're talking about EMDF? May?
May, I could probably talk loud enough anyway, but, so yeah, again, thanks, thanks, Dan, I'll try and finish up, see if Sam has any final comments on, on the final remediations at, at all three locations, but again, as Dan mentioned, we have, we have a great team working around the clock virtually, trying to get going on EMDF, and for those of you who have been paying attention, EMWMF is filling up, even though it's big, and it seems like there's a lot of space left, it is filling up, and as, as Dan continues to make great progress at, at all
It is filling up, and as Dan continues to make great progress at all three locations, it'll fill up faster. So we need some new disposal capacity to keep the momentum going. So the team's working hard. I think we've cleared mostly every hurdle except for one or two remaining. Not technical issues, but some regulatory and political issues that are working through that. But one of the things we want to do with this first two-year slice is start the early site prep work to kind of get that going. And then I think, as Dan had mentioned, as you go into the last 10-year slice, that landfill will be open and it will be receiving waste in the 27, 28 timeframe, I think, is what the schedule shows right now. And then finally, mercury treatment. Most of you probably know, we're supporting right now DWE, another DWE prime contractor in the design and construction of the Outfall 200 Mercury Treatment Facility. Once that design is, or once that facility is built and commissioned, the operation of that facility will fall back to us as operations. So again, if you're young enough and/or you have kids that want to come to work in Oak Ridge, there will be a wastewater treatment plan for them to run, and if you want to figure out how good that is, just go visit any of these guys over at LGWO.
Okay, and then finally, the Department of Energy has put all of the remaining environmental media cleanup scope in this contract at Y12 and ORNL. Now I will tell you that Vision 2031 is focused on the buildings at those two sites. However, there will be some small soil, groundwater projects at those sites as we go. If the Department of Energy, the Office of Science, the NNSA want to do some soil removal work to enable their modernization efforts and their vision, we will be there to help them. We'll also be getting started towards the end of Vision 2031 on some of the other large rods, the Bear Creek Burial Ground, and some of the other big cleanup efforts on the reservation. So stay tuned for all that.
All right. So not only do we have to deliver the work safely that Sam and Dan and Scott just covered, but we, as a team, and that means those of you in the audience, those of you that couldn't attend tonight, and this entire leadership team up here, need to partner together to manage the risks associated with the delivery of Vision 2031. Some of those risks we've already discussed, it's EMDF, it's Outfall 200, there's a lot of integration with our State of Tennessee Historic Preservation Office. There's work at Y12, which requires the reduction of the PITUS before we can go into buildings like Alpha Five and Beta Four. So as you can see, there's a lot of risks that we, as a team, need to turn into enablers to deliver Vision 2031, along with Ashley's organization, the Chief Program Office, which will help block and tackle in the front and the back end. We're also going to stand up an enterprise risk management system to really identify and manage and mitigate those risks to ensure that we deliver not only Vision 2031, but the eventual cleanup of the Oak Ridge Reservation. And why that's really key and important is we can deliver that if we stay on track about five to seven years ahead of schedule, which means $3 billion to $4 billion savings to the taxpayer in environmental liability. So it's incredibly important that we, in the continued partnership and collaboration, work together to deliver Vision 2031, and in that shared governance model, really help identify the risks and turn them into enablers through partnership.
All right, I'm up. So I'm Charlie Malarki. I'm the Administrative Services Manager, and I'm going to talk a little bit, you go to the next slide, about the offer process. The big question is, do I have a job? And just kind of begin with that as the talking area, talking point. So we have four different categories of workforce that kind of fall into this transition. So we've got the salary, we've got our ATLC, we've got our building trades, and then staff augmentation subcontractors. And so when we look at that overall group, the answer is that almost everyone will have a job as we go through that. I can't tell you it's going to be 100% because at some point, we're having folks that are either, their scope is ending or they're retiring, or maybe there's a couple that we're actually not going to pick up. But by far, that would be a very small number, and by far, the vast majority of the workforce will carry over into the new contract. We're going to, as far as the process goes, we kind of walk you through with each of those areas, how that's going to work. With the salary and the ATLC, we're actually going to produce offer letters for each of those individuals. Probably the good news story for everybody is, we're not bringing you through a drawn-out application process, we're not going through a whole host of interviews to have you, if you've been through transition, sometimes companies come in and they make sure everybody's going to get, they're going to interview everybody, and so everybody gets stressed out about, hey, I got to put together a resume, I got to go figure out how to interview for my job, and that's not what we're doing. We're going to send out offer letters. It'll be sometime the week of April 4th is what we're targeting for offer letters to go out to the workforce for those salaried and the ATLC. And we expect a quick turnaround on that, a couple of days, and send those letters back into HR, and then we're going to proceed with, you know, confirmation that you have a job moving into the next, from May 23rd. For the building trades, we'll go through a process of working with the union hall to send the list of names that we're going to look to get referred back to us. They're going to go through their process to review to make sure their building trades are in good standing, and then refer those employees back to us. And again, a similar timeframe, we're looking to start that process in April with the building trades hall, and it might take a little longer for them to process through the volume of people that they have to refer back to us, but they'll work that with us and coordinate that with us. And then for the staff augmentation contractors, procurement obviously will lead that effort and send back to each of the staff all companies the recommendation from the management team that we're going to continue on with the staff all contractor, and then they can notify their employees for, you know, a continuation of the contract. But all of that is also, again, coordinated, starting in early April, with the staff all contractors and with our procurement office. The question on benefits, again, a good news story that for 2022, the benefits are going to continue just as is. So there's not going to be any changes to our benefit structure come May 23rd. If you're enrolled in our benefits, ATLC or salary, then you're going to be in the same plan. You're not going to have to do open enrollment, we're just going to transition you over. So for things like, hey, where am I in my deductible for my medical plan? Well, that's just going to roll over, so you're not going to have any change. If you already met your deductible, you have met your deductible with the new contract, so nothing's going to change there. For things like FICA deductions, again, nothing's going to change. So if you, that's kind of the theme, we're trying to make this very simple, Ken alluded to it earlier, in stream line, and we want you to go through this transition almost seamlessly so that if they wanted the contract, you're right where you were the last day of this contract. So from a FICA perspective, whatever you've contributed from a social security contribution, that'll go towards your max for the year, you're not going to have to start that over. 401K is the same plan. Whatever you're enrolled in today, you're going to continue to have the company match, you can continue to have your contributions made the same way, and, you know, again, that'll be seamless. So you can track that through the same fidelity sites that you're in today, the same medical plans, all of that will continue. So there'll be no clock restarts or any of that, that kind of information. Teleworking, so that posture will continue as we have it today. We returned everybody back to full duty, I think, on the 28th of February, and we're continuing with that. We do have teleworking available, just like we had pre-pandemic, and you'd work that through your line management. But, you know, for things like FMLA, or if there's a particular business driver that says that's the right thing to do, then teleworking might be available for you in that sense. But no real change relative to that. So the, as far as information goes, obviously, you're attending the meetings here, we're going to continue to put information out on the websites via FAQs, via the links that we have and the emails. So I would encourage you to continue to pay attention to that, as we'll continue to put information out for that.